This will be a meeting of the Hennessy Town Board of Trustees, April 8th, 2021. Roll call, please.
Keith, or, yeah, Keith? Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Okay, report from Hennessy United Board. Wes, or Barn?
We meet next week, so... I mean, that's all I know.
Yeah, that's all I have. I know we'll meet next week.
Okay. Item 3 is consider approval of consent agenda. Item A, minutes of March meetings. Item B, approval of claims as follows. March purchase orders, 8,778 on 9. April purchase orders, 29,104 43. April restricted sales tax fund, 109,520 05. April library fund, 721 29. April cemetery care fund, 91 57 50. April street and alley fund, 5,488 87. And transfer, 28,546 68. From CDBG checking, 104 900 to pool checking, 143 686. Budget amendments. And the following reports, treasure, library, police, and the quarterly financial report, which I think everybody has a copy of. Anybody got any additions or corrections to the consent agenda?
Well, I kind of looked at this quarterly report. Be honest with you, I was really impressed with it, considering what the economy's like, you know? I think that it's trying to get a little better. I was a little worried about our expenses, but I think Tiffany, you've done a good job here. It looks good, too.
I agree.
Just keep positive, I guess. It looks really good. I'm impressed with this. Of course, it's not anything like it was two years ago, but nobody's this.
Yeah, but we survived 2020, and that's the same.
So you gotta take what you got, you know, and make the best of it. I think that's what's happening here.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll second that. Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item 4, citizens' comments. Anybody got anything they'd like to say? Everybody's looking at you, Abel.
They don't want to talk on one of the agenda items, so...
It's in the agenda.
Yeah. So we're gonna let Tony.
Well, like we've kind of already heard, this event, the April 18 cruise-in for Cruising Oklahoma, has gotten a lot larger than what we anticipated. I think the last time we were talking about anywhere from 400 to 500 cars. Our last cruise had over 700. And this next cruise, we're talking about even getting bigger because this is actually a requirement cruise for people that want to go into the May cruise to get into the races. So we're probably gonna have some cars out here, some heavy hitters. We're also, there's a group called Coffees and Cars Tulsa that are talking about coming in. They can be anywhere from about 150 to 200 cars. So we've got a lot of cars coming in. I know I'm beginning with Ed here, trying to make sure that we have basically everything we need to do to get lined out. I've talked with Tiffany. We've got the porta potty situation lined out, which is awesome. Thank you. I've gotten with the street department, Troy. We're basically grabbing every, you know, barricade and everything else that we can get a hold of. And I went ahead and got a hold of Ray Shimonik over at the county. And they are fully in board with, you know, helping us out, getting as many barriers that we need. So basically, this is turning into a large event. It seems like I've got all of the restaurants, they are gonna be open. All the mercantiles are gonna be open for this. Basically, our town is going to be taken over, quite literally. Last, our last cruise in Blanchard. We tried to get Blanchard on board and told them about the size that we were talking about, and unfortunately, they completely underestimated the numbers that we gave them. They weren't ready. None of the restaurants, they only had a taco truck and a subway open. Poor guys ran out of food. It's gonna be a good thing for our town, but at the same time, there's gonna be a whole lot going on. The cruise is supposed to be coming in at 1 o'clock. Due to some other events in other towns that we are cruising through, we'll actually have cars starting to arrive in around noon instead of 1 o'clock now. We're gonna have some vendors that are gonna be starting to set up around 4:30 to 7 o'clock on Saturday night in the park. So we have actual vendors starting to come in. They'll completely come filtering in on Sunday to finish up setting up as well. So I'll also need to get with you guys to make sure we have someone that's, you know, patrolling the area for some of the guys that are over there, just in case they have stuff out there. So I'll get with you later on that, if that's okay.
I won't be in the office tomorrow.
That's fine.
So next week.
Yeah. Just give me a call or text whenever you're in the office, I'll come see you. But yeah, that's, like I said, this has turned into a much larger event than we even anticipated. So this is gonna be, I think, gonna be great for the town. It's gonna bring in and inject more revenue than we even thought. I think this could help out a lot of the restaurants and mercantiles and then actually put our town back on the map for us, at least in the car community. So pray for it, pray for me. I've got a lot of grades over this, so... But in, like I said, if you guys know anybody that wants to help out, I know, you know, we've got some other people that are now willing to help out. If they want to help out, especially college kids, high school kids, we need help, you know, directing cars toward a park and things along that nature. So I do want to thank you guys for allowing this opportunity to come into Hennessy. But who knows? If it turns out to a great thing, it could be an annual thing. So this could help not only just, you know, the restaurants and the businesses, and it will help Hennessy in itself. So just kind of want to keep you guys updated on it, so...
Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
All right. Item 5 is the town administrator's report.
I gave you guys a report. The swimming pool, we opened up reservations for swim parties on April 1st. And as of yesterday, we had over 30 pool parties scheduled.
That's great.
It's crazy. The sewer, we're having, over the past month with all the rain, the freezing temperatures that we had, we had some problems with the lagoons filling up. We did get ahold of DEQ because during the freezing temperatures, we weren't able to run the irrigation. So they allowed us to pump over into the creek. We just had to report to them daily how much we were pumping. But we are doing, next week, we're gonna do some smoke tests of our lines to see where we're getting the ionized, the infiltration, to find out where our problems are coming from. Because I know when we have heavy rains and stuff, then we are getting a lot of...
Yeah, we're over there.
Yes. We're getting a lot of...
Oh, it's going to...
Lagoons. Yes. So, but DEQ is working with us. They're helping us find people to help us. They also told us that we can get a permit to discharge during the winter months when it's freezing and we're unable to irrigate to keep our lagoons down. Because there's no sunshine to...
Evaporate.
To evaporate. So they've been very, very helpful. Unlike in the past, when it was very hard to work with DEQ, they, they're very, very responsive with us.
That's awesome.
So we're gonna be looking into, looking into that to see. We're gonna start, I know we've been working on, in our managers' meeting, the managers are gonna start doing employee evaluations. They have to have everybody done by June 1st so that we can get onto the board come June, all the employees. So you will have those. We're working on the employee handbook. The managers gave me all the changes that they would like to see of the employee handbook, so I'm working on those, putting those all in, and then I'll be giving you guys a draft here soon. So, O-MAG training next month. Remember, it's gonna be a long board meeting. I know I talked to Bert today.
Today.
And we're thinking about moving the meeting, next month's meeting, up to 6 o'clock. Because we do have the hour-long O-MAG training as part of the meeting, so...
And I'd rather spend an hour on the front end than in the back end. I think maybe that would help.
I'm still waiting from ODOT on the welcome signs. I've emailed them and emailed them and still haven't got back with them, but I really think that they are waiting on the construction of 51. It did go out...
It makes sense to do that, to see how it's going to lay out, you know? About why, it sure, it makes sense to wait. You know what I mean?
Their, Cummins Construction got that contract, and they are supposed to be moving in next month to start that project. So they're going to lease some land from Scotty Hike, right there by Mark Henry, where Mark Henry's shop is, across from the grocery store. And so they will be starting on that project. So they will all be in town. So I'm thinking that will be good for our restaurants and different things because all of those workers will be in town every day. So... And then our nitrates, we've had several people ask about our nitrates. We are gonna start putting those on our website daily.
I saw that. I couldn't, and maybe it was just my computer, but I couldn't get it, it was all tiny, I couldn't read it.
Um, it's, it just...
Am I saying something wrong?
It's a work in progress.
Okay.
So...
How far is it supposed to take that highway? Was it going all the way over to 74?
I was told originally it was only eight miles, so...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I didn't know.
No.
Oh, wish.
But it's gonna take over a year.
It needs to go clear to I-35.
So they'll be in town for over a year.
Terrible shade.
Well, we will welcome those guests for a year.
Yes. I agree.
Tony, anybody got any questions for Tiffany on the administrator's report? I appreciate you and everything that the staff's doing townwide. Things seem to be going really well and...
And I could go on and on, I just wanted to give you guys some highlights.
The highlights?
Different things.
Well, thank you. All right. Other scheduled business. Discuss approved, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following. Item A, discussion and action to approve payment of young contracting pay application number four using CDBG funds for CDBG grant number 17767-19.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's actually, we're using CDBG funds and local funds on this con, on this pay request.
Okay.
So the grand total of that was $81,183.46. Of that, $39,546.73 will be CDBG funds. The remaining will be from local funds, and that's your first use of local funds on the project. So $41,636.73.
Okay.
So it'll be a combination on this one. So it's using up the last of the CDBG funds for construction.
How are we coming along?
I think we're doing great.
Yes.
The next item actually answers that question a little bit better.
Okay. I haven't looked at it.
This is the stormwater drainage?
Oh, okay.
So this change order is for the 37?
No, 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 no. This is, we're on the payout.
We're on number, we're on A. This is just the pay application that we're talking about.
Where we're gonna pay. We're not on the change order yet. We're not on the change order yet.
Okay.
We're on the payout.
I'll make a motion for...
This one. The application for payment.
Number four. There you go.
I thought that the number didn't work.
Make a motion for the approval of payment of the young contracting to pay of 51 APP number four using the CBD funds for the CBD grant hashtag 7, 17767-19.
Some new tweeter. Hashtag.
One second.
Okay, sorry, number.
You're fine.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item B is discussion and action to approve change order two for CDBG grant number 17767-19.
Okay. This is change order two.
Okay.
This is actually going to, in front of Troy Watkins' house, they're at Walnut and Second. They come around the corner and right in front of his drive, they just stopped. And then his tin horn is a very old, bad tin horn, and it looked like it was just going to be, it was gonna cause us some trouble. And so I asked them, because we had some extra funds available, I asked them to go ahead and kind of finish off, at least to the alley, finish off through his yard. Because it, I...
It was just gonna cause problems?
Yes. So they just went ahead and went to the alley. So that's part of this change order. Then we got to Abel's house. Over there, right now, they have cut this ditch. It's an open ditch, right there at the corner of Oklahoma and Walnut, on the side of his house. It's a big ditch.
Huge ditch.
I'm waiting on somebody to drive out there.
That tree right there, if you put a line to see how much traffic is in that thing, that street's got a lot of traffic. You will see somebody on the side. Somebody's gonna fall in it.
After talking with Abel, he has asked us to enclose that ditch with underground drainage. So...
We were gonna fill the water and let you fish.
We fill it up with something.
So that's what this change order, at first, we just got a change order with Troy's stuff, but then, instead of having two different change orders, I asked to just combine it into one. So that is what may be done with this change order.
My, and I totally agree that this needs to be done. My only question is, have we got the money left and our funds to do it?
You're, yes. You're using all the money that you budgeted. It's not 100% gone, so you don't have to do any kind of budget modifications or anything. The money that you allotted is being used. You're still within budget.
Great.
Because that was my big concern. It's like, oh, gotta ask for more money.
This sounds rather expensive, but...
It is. $37,411.23 more.
Yeah. Yeah, I got choked on Abel's part.
Yes.
I believe it was that much, when you told me.
Yes.
Couldn't you just continue around the corner and make it a moat?
Why not?
I think...
That'll look a lot better when they get in.
Gonna leave here with a lot of problems.
Yeah, so you're not adding funds to the budget, you're just using more of your budget.
Yes.
So it's, and it's still continuation of a project. The area has been, is within our environmental review, so we don't have to ask any permissions. We should be okay to go.
Okay. Great.
I'd like to have Abel a question. Since you do live there, we were talking about maybe making that road a one-way road. Do you think that would be a possibility, to make that road a one-way road? Because it's really narrow.
No, I'm serious. That might be a good idea.
Yeah.
That, that, that might...
It's very narrow.
That's a very good idea.
Because I don't think two cars can go by themselves and stay on the blacktop.
South of Oklahoma or the Oak Street?
Yes.
The whole street make it a one-way.
Or at least make it just a, you know, one-way during school hours, because that's when it gets clogged up pretty badly.
Yeah.
If we enclose that ditch, they'd have room to drive over to your yard.
Actually, that's a town yard, really. And really, you could, guys, you could, I think I would advise you that if you guys widen that road up there for a two-car, but then again, you run into the same issue when you get further out there, you know? It's just the one lane.
It's much more in our budget to put up one-way signs.
After you talk to all those numbers, yeah, I agree with you. Just put a one-way sign. And it doesn't make a difference to me which way you put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
That's probably something we need to look at and bring up.
Yeah, because that's really narrow.
It is.
And there's no way you can wind it, I promise you. There's no other way.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty tight.
It is tight. Okay.
All right, I'm gonna move then that we approve the change order number two for our CDBG, CDBG grant, 17767-19, and the amount of 37,411,23.
One second then. Roll call, please.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Keith? Or Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, could I get your signature on change order?
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Is that all you wanted?
That's it.
For any of my staying, I might argue over other stuff.
Good to see you, Abel.
Yeah, I'll get, yeah, just text me when you're in the office. I'll see y'all later.
Okay, thanks, Tony.
Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know if there was something else we needed to sign. Okay. Item C is discussion of possible action to request from Oklahoma Department of Transportation to place flashing red stop signs at Highway 8151 intersection and lighted controlled crosswalk in front of library. Wes called me the other day about the stop sign issue, and we do have issues at the 8151 intersection. We have asked DOT quite a while back, but we had asked them about putting a regular stop light in there since we've got a, two main highways coming together. They've told us that we don't have the traffic count to do that. So I'm sure if we didn't have the traffic count then, we probably don't now, because at that time, there was a lot more traffic going up and down the highways. What we're looking at here would be one of the stop signs that's outlined with red lights, that's solar controlled, that would be flashing, trying to get people's attention, because a lot of people buzz through that, buzz through that intersection. The crosswalk in front of the library, I was approached by a gentleman the other day who said on two different occasions, there has been a child getting ready to cross to go to the library, and there is a painted crosswalk there, and he stopped in his truck, and his truck's on the outside lane, and the child steps off to go, and a car comes buzzing by this way. Said he was honking and yelling at the child to stop, which, thank goodness, they did. But he said he has actually seen that twice. So what I would like to see us do is try to put up the lighted, a curtsy's got him, a lighted sign that says crosswalk that's also flashing. But even beyond that, if we could, if the state would allow us to put up one where they pushed a button and it stopped traffic, which is what we had when we had the school done.
Is that the one like Eди has over their trails?
Yes.
Where they push it, it flashes, and...
Yes.
That would be really nice.
That would be, that would be awesome if we could do that. So really, what I'm asking for tonight is just the board to vote on this so that we can tell the DOT that the Hennessy Town Board of Trustees took action and hereby request to get this done, so...
I was, I haven't talked to Representative Dobinsky, but a gentleman friend of mine did about this situation. And he said that he thought that it would do him a lot of good if we had an official request from the town. You know, something he could go to DOT with and say, hey, this is what I need in Hennessy. That's kind of what I'd have to, Bert, to put this on the agenda for, if we could, if we can get unanimous on this, and, uh, just make a request to get it done.
I make a motion that we request from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to place a flashing light, red stop sign at Highway 8151 intersection, and a lightly-controlled crosswalk in front of the library.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item D is executive session presented to 2501 statute section 307b1 to discuss hiring pool lifeguards in executive session.
I'll move to convening to executive session.
Second.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
To regular session.
I'll move to a convening to regular session.
Second. Roll call?
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item M is discussion of possible action to hire pool lifeguards.
I'm gonna move that we hire Angela Rodriguez, or excuse me, Angel Rodriguez, Wade Benson, Emily Root, Michelle Roman, Jake Skuvanek, Grace Curran at 8:50 per hour, and also hire Morgan Wymore, Jalen Dahl, Lindsay Meek, Chloe Murray, and Christian Tovar, and Haley Smith for eight hours.
I'll second that.
The difference is, this first group would be a returning importment ship to them. A little bit expensive.
Roll call?
Wes?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Item F is discussion of possible action on drawings and their schematic for the Library History Center. Richard, you put this on?
Yes. We started to measure out the library building. I think the cost was $8,000 just to measure the building, where the walls are and things like that. But it came up for the vote council, and I support the library, but everyone voted against it, including me, because at that time, our budget was tight. I don't know if our sales tax revenue is sufficient enough for it. Go ahead and do the measurements of the library, bring it up to fire code, and also, to prevent, you need those measurements in order to turn it over to an architect to develop plans of what could be made use of that building. And here, we're talking about the second floor of the main old high school building plus the auditorium. That auditorium, I throw the word auditorium in the garbage can, I think of it as a huge building, but four great walls, roof, and this great space. I think of it as a huge building, but four great walls, roof and this great space, what do we do with it? And I think it's time to make some kind of decision on what we do with that library. I don't know the exact year, we talked about it, if any, what year it was turned over to the town. But I, our class was the last senior class and, and that was nineteen sixty four.
Town got it in nineteen eighty. Let me think just a minute, I can tell you exactly. About nineteen eighty three.
Eighty three.
We said it was the eighties.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I had just gone off the board. While I was on the board, we negotiated with the school and approved to purchase it. I had just gone off the board and we got a heavy rain and the rain at the Old Town Hall, which was up in Memorial Park, started collapsing. So they quickly moved, they weren't ready to move and the building wasn't ready to move into, but they moved because of that roof collapse, but.
And I just, you know, that, um, building, if there's a fire in there, it'll probably be from the wall, old wiring that's in the building. But if we're going to improve that building, bring it up to fire code. You've got some other alternative uses for, we gotta have the measurements, then we have to have architecture drawings. The question is, how do we fund it? We know we can't fund it out of the budget, there's no money for that. And we can't pass a bond to improve the high school building. Because we've got a bond going for fifteen years for the swimming pool. It'll have to be done either through grants or donations. And I distributed in our last town council meeting that what Medford did, they wanted a museum. They drew up the schematic and collected eight hundred thousand dollars and built their museum. Uh, Kingfisher evidently went through the same process in building their library. This, the, doing it with, uh, I think grants, we understand that procedure. With the, uh, donations, these legacy programs or foundation or giving programs, whatever you want to call them. It's a herky jerky process. You don't know when it's gonna, when things are gonna happen. And we've talked about this giving program for a long time, but then we had Mr. Koka John make that huge donation. To the Hennessy Education Foundation. And the best example to me, Bert, is you. Where you reserved the lots at the cemetery, you did not sell them, saving space, uh, for a chapel. And I don't know how long you were doing that, saving lots, but it must have been several years. Community development is not going to be done in two or three years, we're talking about twenty or thirty years. Also on this library, I announced that gift of one point three million. For ten years, all the money from that one point three million will go to the library. You're gonna have to have a schematic, some plans to spend that money. Now, with, with the community foundation and the Cherokee Strip Foundation, they all get a five percent return. So there will be some money there to do this work. That gift is a match gift, you have to take that one point three to two point six. The donation program, the giving program, bound, legacy program, whatever you want to call it, has one big advantage over grants. Grants will not cover current expenses. You cannot get grants, you can get a grant to buy, say, a fire truck or a police car. But you can't get a grant to pay for the gasoline and new tires. So there's a ten year window in there. From my passing, I looked at the mortality tables again, I, mortality tables to say I'll be around for about ten, eleven more years. If we get this started, that takes us twenty years to go ahead and get that match fund started. And it's, if you're gonna catch a fish, you gotta throw your fish up in the water. What we need to do is to, for the town, people are not going to donate to something they don't understand and they can't visualize. And we need to do some kind of schematic and.
Was that eight thousand dollars going to, that's, if I'm understanding this correctly, that's just gonna get us the as-built plan, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
It's gonna get a plan on the library as it exists today, but it's not gonna show what it would look like renovated or anything.
That's correct, it would be a two-step process.
Do we know what the cost would be to get the second step?
Well, I think this is part of it, if you go in for a grant or if you say, if you say, we as a community would like to improve our library and do this. Fireproof it and maybe do, do some additions or improvements, we need cost figures. So there's a lot of work into this, it's, uh, listening to Tiffany talk about the pool and how that's going. I could see all of that multiplied into the school project. Now, it's, in a way, it's no skin off our nose. There's money to do the drawings, to measure it out. Then there'll be money for an architect to, uh, develop some alternatives. What do you do with the second floor? How much does that cost? You've got this huge auditorium, what do you do with it? What do you do with that auditorium? And, uh, uh, so there's money there too.
It, so you say there's some money we can access to get this drawing? I'm sorry, I'm a little confused.
The money question, um, I suppose you could go for a grant to draw up, to pay for drawings and architectural things. But I was looking for the town, if the town had money. When, when we got that estimate of eight thousand dollars, which kind of surprised me Tiffany. Tiffany and I met with the engineer and, and.
It was eight thousand dollars to do the as-built drawing?
Right. Richard, I, I don't, um, and I totally understand where you're coming from. I think to get people to donate to a project, you gotta show them what you're gonna do and what it's gonna look like. I don't know where we're at as far as tax collection and where we're at in this year's budget that well. Would this be something that we could, I know Tiffany's probably started on budget, have you, or you will be soon? Is this something we could see where we're at in the budget for the coming year? Richard, I'm asking you about that, but.
I think that it might be a better deal, uh. I don't, to me, and you talked about this too, I think you do have to have the community involved in it. And it might be an issue where we want to take that idea too, that meeting that we wanted to have with the community and get their input on it. Is this, is this where we want to put our money? Do we want to put our money in, uh, rebuilding this library or do we want to build a new library? Or do we even want to, what do we want to do? You know, I don't know what they want.
I, I think that's an excellent comment.
I think that's what I would recommend that this board do is see what the community wants before we proceed with that.
Yeah. I, I think that, I agree with you a thousand percent. That, I think that it, it all, all, all community development starts with.
Well, those are the ones that are gonna pay for it.
Yeah, we, they did that with the dome, did that with the swimming pool. Do you want to do that, you know, so?
Well, Richard, I, I totally agree with you that that building, I have looked at it multiple times. I totally agree that the wiring needs to be addressed. We did address the windows, which were a huge improvement.
It was enough, it made the building look nicer.
It did and more, a lot more efficient. And, you know, I just, I'm a little concerned right now because I don't know where we're at financially until we kind of get into the new budget.
Well, we don't need.
Now, if you had a grant to come in and pay for that, I'd say let's do it, you know, but.
It could be out of the town budget or pursue a grant. We don't have to make, uh, a decision tonight on how we're going to proceed, but I think we need to make a decision. We've got this library down there, we've got, and I think overlooked part of it is the History Center. They've run out of room. And I know that St. Clair Station, people bring these stuff, you know. The greatest problem for our museum is not getting artifacts coming in. It's, most museums cannot handle and have to reject things coming in because they don't, I don't care what the museum is. They, they can only handle so much. But I think we need to make a decision on this library, what we're, we're gonna do with it. It's been sitting there and sitting there and sitting there. And I have no problems putting it up to a community-wide vote. Do we improve the library? Do we tear, or tear it down? Do we want a library? It's a community decision.
I think the community definitely wants a library. And I, I agree with Wes on, on this community planning meeting we're going to have to put that out there. I think we would get a lot of input from that.
The, um, they had a small towns and city seminars and on something like this. And you kind of saw that with the dome and, and also with the swimming pool Tiffany that we did. Yeah, I think we had six plans for the swimming pool and each jumped about five hundred thousand dollars. But some towns, what they've done is they've established a small committee and some towns established a large committee. One town had a committee of sixteen people on it. And some towns did both, but there needs to be some kind of plan involved here, how we're gonna move forward on it. And the reason I brought it up, I, we were gonna have this planning meeting in January and then here came the COVID. And it got delayed and now we're gonna delay it some more. I, I looked at that initial, Tiffany and I were kind of going back and forth on this, but. The easy grants are the REIT grant and the, and the community block grant, those are the two easiest. Not easy grants, but the easier to get grants, doesn't mean you're gonna get that, those grants every year. But they are the e- easier ones to get, but they emphasize infrastructure. Water systems, sewer systems, ambulances, police cars, health facilities and things like that. And I was hoping that we do that and then go into some of the, what I call, community amenities. The library and the pavilion and.
I agree with you, I, I feel like, I know we've got issues with our sewer system. We've got, we had a cracked line that we had to spend, I forget how much, to repair over there on Fourth and that alley. But they had to actually dig down, which I think was about fourteen feet, if I remember correctly. And replace the section, which was quite expensive. What I'm getting at, we're getting a lot of rainwater into our sewer legates, which is not good. It dilutes the bacteria that's there and it fills our lagoon to the point where we, we've got more water than we can handle. So I know when Tiffany talked about smoking those lines, that's gonna be a step in that direction. But then there's gonna have to be some money involved somewhere to fix that. And that's something we're gonna have to fix. And I'm not saying this to push the library to the back burner. But I, I would like to, I'd like to see a comprehensive plan once we get that done. And are, are we still looking, cambering our sewer lines or is that completed?
We, we have that report, but we can do so much per year free of charge that we have then.
Okay.
But that's all part of it.
But I'd like to see us put this whole thing together and say, this project is gonna cost X amount of dollars and this project. And, and I really would like to, I, I have no problem in, in doing what you want to do out of a REIT grant.
Well, I don't, the, uh, the REIT grant, Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think that, I don't think you're gonna get any library funding from the REIT grant or the community block grant.
Okay.
I know, you know, I, I look at how they, they publish their awards and it's always for some very basic things. The sewer systems, water systems, police cars, uh, I think last year they gave a grant to.
I mean, you won't get a REIT.
I didn't know we could, okay.
Yeah. So I don't think you can get any, but I'm going back to the legacy giving foundation aspect of it. And I keep pointing at what, um, Mr. Koka John did in the chapel at the cemetery, out of the blue here it came, you know. And it's a, but I think that you gotta plant a seed and maybe that seed costs money. So I think it's right for Tiffany to go through the budget and see if we have any excess funds.
But I think we need to go ahead and plan a community program, a, a community-wide, um, planning meeting. And let's get the community's input on what they want as far as a library goes. Before we put that eight thousand dollars into the as-built plans. Let's have that community meeting and see if they want to, um, what they want.
I agree with you completely.
Let's, let's go ahead and get that meeting scheduled and get that going and start there. That's kind of what we did with the pool, we had the community meeting and go from there. And then we can.
See what the priorities are that, that the people want.
Yes.
I think that's a good idea.
And then, once we know that priority, then the people who are very interested in that. Then maybe there's some people there that we can get together to maybe head up a committee to kind of put something together.
Yes.
And I mean, to me, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, I agree one hundred percent.
Yeah. Why? I'm trying to think, I, I think we need a list of things to prioritize. And I, I wouldn't mind seeing, maybe with the help from our, our media, to ask people. You know, if there's something that the town's gonna have a planning meeting for the community. If there's something you would like to see placed on that to discuss, turn it into town hall. Because there may be things that, that people are thinking about that we're unaware of.
You know.
Of course, everybody's gonna put the street they live on, research is probably, but, you know.
Conoco Road, I mean, Midtown Road between Conoco Road and Seven Street, I know that, yes. I'm, I'm working on it, so.
I think this community, I think this community-wide meeting would add energy to the process.
Oh, I do too, definitely.
And it's just like Mr. Koka John. Donations to education fa- foundation, Hennessy Education founding is not unusual. If you go to the Community Foundation of Oklahoma and the Cherokee Strip Foundation, you'll find towns that have, they may have six or eight funds. One might be the cemetery fund. That what, what the, what this giving program does, it covers current expenses and you can't do that with the grants. And the other thing, Barbara, when the vision committee had that very nice dinner, when all those people came down from Enid. How many Hennessy people attended that meeting? There were quite a few. There were quite a few. I think there were about forty, fifty Hennessy people there. Do you agree or?
I don't think there were that many outside of the committee, the, the United Committee. Bert, you were there.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
But we feel.
They outnumbered us, the people from Enid, way outnumbered us, yeah.
So I think the interest is.
If I could tell my two cents out there is that not only is the library an old building the city has, but our police department is an old building that we have, the town hall here is an old place. You know, it'd even be something to have a large facility, not tearing anything down. I'm not trying to tell it to say that, but have a place where we have our police department, our town hall, our library, all essential stuff. We would cut our electrical by half if we had everything under one roof. And then when somebody needed to go somewhere in Hennessy, they would know exactly where to go. So that's my two cents.
Living in a larger town, to me, everything in Hennessy is very close. I mean, I ride my bike from behind a Pizza Hut to Bullford Park. I can do it in ten minutes.
Yeah.
I mean.
I couldn't. You got me, Richard.
You got a big old hill to climb though.
Well, I'm in the same route.
I could see such a facility in a large town where it's, one department's three miles this way and another department's five miles this way. But in Hennessy, so small, I really don't.
Well, a little town like Fairview did it, so.
Yeah.
Well.
I'm just.
And I've heard that's really nice.
Just my opinion and, and I'm not trying to tear anything down. I love the library, you know, but.
So what if, what if I, with the help of the media, maybe we can plan one for, what's this, April? What if, could, you think we could do June?
Will that deter a crowd because of harvest? Are there people that would come?
I thought you had moved it already to like September.
Oh, I did.
Town started, I thought we had it in the fall.
No, that's for a town one, that wasn't for the community one.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was the same thing.
We were going to do a town one and then.
We were to get a.
You do it in the summer, you do it at some people's birthday.
So we need to do like September?
Especially this year.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. September? And I'll get a facilitator?
That'll give you time to work through the budget.
Yeah.
Have you come on the show and talk about what we need or what we're asking the community for and that kind of thing? Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Sounds good.
And it may, may be helpful for you guys to come up with some seed. Like we know there's potholes, but we're thinking library and pavilion and, you know, bigger things that affect all everybody, not just your street kind of ideas, yeah.
Right.
Skateboard park.
Yes.
And things like that.
We could still have a pothole committee.
Everybody has a bucket, yeah.
Yeah.
Jack wants to be chairman of the pothole committee.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we've all sponsored a pothole on Midtown Road, so.
I am working on that.
I thought when you sponsored one, you, you fixed it, you filled it up.
Then it rains and washes the dirt out. It doesn't stick.
Okay, does that work for you, Richard?
What's being talked about and proposed is, is the community development program. I agree one thousand percent.
Okay, sounds great. So that kind of took care of item GNH.
Yes, it did.
Okay. Item I, accept, reject, any resignations not received prior to posting the agenda.
You left that H.
No, we left that H.
H, I didn't get H?
No.
Oh, I missed H, I'm sorry. Had my check marked in my place. Item H is discussion and action to elect two trustees for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board. Every year they send us a list of candidates for us to vote on. It's not from this board to represent down there, but you want to explain that, Tiffany?
Um, OMAG, they, they have a, a board. OMAG is our insurance company and they have a board and they send out to their, their members to elect trustees. And so they've given us this ballot to elect two trustees out of their list. Um, we have gotten two letters from two individuals. And so we've enclosed that into your packet for you guys to elect two trustees.
Do you have a recommendation?
No, because.
Honestly.
I don't know any of those individuals.
I know the, the top two were, um, Coffee and Tom's. The Tom's never seen any of you guys.
It should be the very last.
Uh-huh.
Usually I know when I want to start.
I don't know when I want to. Well, is that, and, do we use that group much? I mean, communication-wise, do we communicate with them?
Yes, OMAG, in fact, they'll be here, they're the ones that are making, doing their training.
What, I guess what I'm asking, have they changed anything insofar as policy-wise that has been inconvenient for us?
No.
Is there a reason to change the board, I guess, is what I'm saying?
No, huh. They're, in fact, they're doing some really good things, just like when we do that training, they're going to give us some rebate money. They give out, um, they give out free training, length of place training.
Well, when they take them to accommodate, if they're doing a good job.
They give out free training for this department and for us, safety trainings.
I kind of like the looks of one from a small town and.
You know, we've done that before, we have done that before.
That's what I was thinking too.
We tried to give the small guy a.
A small town and kind of in our neck of the woods. And then maybe somebody from a little bigger town, I don't know.
Yeah.
All of those places are much, much bigger than Mino, though.
Most of them are all eastern here. That'd be the only really one.
That's the only one really kind of on the. Okay, we need two. So we've got Gerald Howery.
Clip, do you have?
Any input on that clip?
No.
Richard, do you have any?
Was it Mino close? I was. Did he say Rick Goodman? No, he's.
Gerald Howery, town a minute, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong line. Rick Goodman, mayor and trustee of Mino.
So I was going off what he said.
I'm sorry.
I see this one was in, worked in, in O'Keen.
One of them didn't work in O'Keen? Was that Gerald?
The one on the back page, he's, he worked in O'Keen.
Yeah, Gerald used to be the Gerald Howery.
Do you know him, Tiffany? What's your thoughts? Putting you on the spot, huh?
He was one.
This one guy's graduated from the FBI National Academy.
We don't want him. We don't want him.
Gerald wasn't much, no.
Pick one, Bert.
Pick two, Bert, let's get this over here.
I, I, I'd say Rick Goodman for Mino to me and.
Huh?
You, you started to have some input there.
Yeah, and then I'm just like, I'm.
You want to go with Mark Winery, Winery? City of Drumright, Drumright? That would be kind with me. He's on the Air Force.
Who is it?
Mark.
Oh, Mark, okay. I don't hear it.
Sounds good to me, those two, okay.
Mark and, and Rick?
Yeah.
Mark's a good guy, I know him.
So you told us.
You got the official one?
I got it.
Is this the official one?
No, it's on my desk.
Okay.
Okay.
Some of these people, I just have to see them, their names just don't.
Harold, you were so quiet back there.
Really?
I am so sorry. I meant to invite you to go to executive session with us. I apologize for that. You were just being so quiet, I didn't even remember you were there.
I thought you were going like this, but I didn't know if you was wanting the candy or me back here.
Well, I was for the candy, but see, weren't my priorities. You weren't in the right place.
I'm, okay, I'm going to move then that, um, the board book for Rick Goodman and Mark Winery as trustees of the online board.
I second that, roll call.
Wes?
Yes.
Clip?
Yeah.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, now item I. Re, accept, reject, any resignations not received prior to posting the agenda? New business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Katie, I don't want you to think I don't like you.
I told you I'd come sit by you.
But I asked Tiffany and you to trade places so I could hear Tiffany, but my hearing is such a problem.
Okay, fine. I told you I'd come sit by you.
Okay. Citizens comments.
I'm going in Monday, I had my ears checked, by the way, and the hearing aids.
Tammy, do you have something you'd like to bring up?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. One is I wanted to, um, see if the board would consider, uh, dropping the rate for the water walkers for the pool. Um, I've been going to Keen Fisher, uh, it's water walk and it is seventy-five dollars for a whole year. And you can go from seven to nine in the morning or from, I believe it's twelve to one. So they have, you know, different times that you can go. And, um, I know that as I've read it, we're doing seventy-five dollars for three months here. And, um, I'm just, don't understand why, you know, ours is so high compared to what Keen Fisher's is and. Um, I just thought maybe if, if it was either the, um, the, you know, rate to just get in or the, um, season pass or something, but I know I'm not the only one, there's other, other ladies that have said, that the ones that go to Keen Fisher already, that, you know, it's a little bit high for the fact that we could go all year long there, so.
There's not a special rate for water walkers. It's for admission to get into. So like, if you go walk, you can stay for the rest of the day or you can go up there at any time also.
Right, but there is some of those ladies that will probably not go other than just water walk. And you got to remember, most of those ladies are going to be in the fifties, sixties and seventies, you know? So, and I mean, I know there's other ladies that go, like I said, to Keen Fisher that I'm sure would like to come to Hennessy also. But, you know, you got to kind of justify and say, well, gosh, I've already paid this to go here. Now this is going to be, you know, I don't know, it just doesn't seem, seems a little much for, um, you know, for that. But, um, anyway, I thought I would bring that up to you guys. Um, I probably should have came and, and talked to somebody before you guys voted on all the rates. Yeah.
Let me get together with Tiffany and Melissa.
Okay. And the other thing, um, is, and again, I understand we're a smaller town. Um, I'm just, don't know if you guys are aware that, um, also in Keen Fisher, you can go to the, the dump. Any, the three dumps that are open during the week with your city bill saying that you have trash. And there's no cost. And I called them and asked them, um, how they did it, because I thought they used to bury theirs. And they said they don't do that anymore, that they were shut down, you know, like, I think you guys had some issues too, but, um, theirs is roll-off. So I, you know, I didn't go into great detail to say, well, it's roll-off, but I'm, she said they can't bury it, so I'm guessing that theirs is picked up. And I know that that's what you guys is, is, and so I just.
They have a contract with their trash company that they get so many roll-offs a month.
At no charge?
At no charge.
Yeah.
And we're paying, how much for roll-off?
We're paying three hundred and twenty-five dollars per roll-off.
Then, I, I can't re, I wish I could answer that question because I was talking to somebody about Keen Fisher.
Cause we talked in that meeting we had with David, the mayor.
They had, the city usually do that, I think, and then they, they contracted out to EMS. I think that's the name of it. Is that sound like EMV, EMS?
It's something.
Out of L R. And they're calling that Trash Union City.
But I just thought, you know, I, I don't remember.
It all, it, it's a cop deal for, uh, the, the cost issue. And I'm sure it is for Keen Fisher, but I don't know what their contract says. You know what I'm saying? Like, so I don't, it's hard to sit here and say, well, we can't do it because of this, because I don't know what they're doing. I know that it's an expensive deal for the city.
If they're, if they're getting some free roll-offs, that's huge. Because that's.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing, I don't know what they're, I know it's changed, I do know that. And I wish we could do that, but it just, we were getting beat up with it, Tammy. The city would just get beat up with it, so.
Well, I'm, I'm glad they're doing the, you know, the two weeks or a week or whatever, that's, that's good. I just, sometimes I don't ever know when it's open, you know? It seems like our hours sometimes are just kind of.
They have changed their duty times, I think we're getting pretty concrete now.
In the winter, we're open on Friday, Saturdays. And then we're getting ready to go back to our summer hours, we'll be open Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, because it seems like it's bad when you're, you're thinking, okay, I'm going to go through, it's a nice day and you, you're going to get rid of some stuff and you're doing all this cleanup and then, oh, wait a minute, the dump's not open. Now what do I do? You know? So, yeah, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up because I had always wondered why, when I used to live in Keen Fisher, I knew that you could go and take your bill and, um, there was no cost.
At one time it was like that, dude.
Was it?
Yeah, it was like twenty-one thousand dollars a month, you said, at Elona, this dump's been terrible.
I, I don't want to sound dismissive of your issues. Keen Fisher's got such a strong sales tax collection base. They have more money to work there. You got Walmart and three-car dealers and, and the, the farm, can't think of the, Atwoods.
I don't know how much they get off of that, though, they're corporates and some of Walmart, you know, corporate.
You get to Keen Fisher.
The sales tax, so.
Yeah, sales tax.
They're like more retailers than we do, yeah.
With the Keen Fisher paper, they published a sales tax for all municipalities in the Keen Fisher County.
Yeah.
And Keen Fisher gets almost twice as much as Hennessy per, per, per citizen.
Well, we need to bring more business here, I guess.
We'd love that. Absolutely would love that.
That's what Walmart is for you, yeah.
Anybody else got anything? Okay, council person reports. Clip, do you have any?
Richard?
Do you have anything?
Yeah.
Wes? I'm good. I've got a couple of things. Um, one is that Tiffany, you put notice out, uh, concerning the cemetery. That everything needed to be picked up by April nineteenth. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to reiterate that, um, when we sell lots, people are given a copy of the rules and regulations. We've also got them posted out there on the fence. We are getting more and more little solar lights, statues, all kinds of extra things. The, the cemetery mowing and weed eating is just huge. I mean, that's just a huge project. So I just want to let the, the citizens know that anything that's not on a headstone or in a vase connected to the headstone is going to be picked up. And so if there's anything out there that the people want, they need to go get it. We, we're just gonna have to enforce that in order to keep mowing and weed eating manageable. There's just no other way, so. You got anything you'd like to add to that?
By the nineteenth, Bert?
By the nineteenth.
By the nineteenth.
And if they want stuff on the headstone, like on the cement, it needs to be, um, it needs to be like glued or.
Needs to be attached.
Attached, because we get these strong winds and it blows it off. And sometimes it gets broken or.
Could be ghost.
Or something. And so then our workers pick it up or they may, you know, do something with it and then people come in here and they've lost their cross or something like that. So if they want it on the cement or on the stone, then it needs to be attached. So, by some means.
Yeah. And we're, we're just gonna have to stick to that very, very strongly to, in the past, things have kind of gotten put out there and we're just gonna have to totally enforce that rule. Other than that, yes, sir.
You gave me time to think. That was a dangerous thing on your part. Wes, this is your last meeting?
It is, yeah.
I just want to thank you for all you've done, the town council, the community. Uh, first time I ever went to the Wine and Chocolate Festival, quite a marvelous thing that is here. There's this rough and tumble old town, farmers with their big machinery and the big machinery and all patches. You have this, I call it delicate romantic festival.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you for pushing the legacy program with the Vision Committee. I watched the Vision Committee. You were the strongest person pushing that. And I appreciate you went to Hepburn to check them out and how they run out there at the museum and made that special trip. I also want to thank you. I think you're the, I'm fairly certain you're the person that came up with the pavilion idea. And I thought that was marvelous. So thank you for so much for what you've done. And I'm sure there's many other things that I'm not aware of.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, I said I had a couple of things.
I don't need that.
Yes, you do. Wes, once again, I echo everything Richard said. You have served this community beyond, beyond great. And I'd like to present you this plaque. Says, presented to Wes Harden. Serving as a board member from two thousand one to two thousand twenty-one. Mayor from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. In grateful appreciation for your twenty years of outstanding loyalty and dedication to the town of Hennessy.
Thank you. Like you, like each other. Yay.
Here, let me. Let's do that. Let me, there, now let's do it.
Okay. Yay, thank you.
Hey, look over here, guys. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much, Wes, but it's been a true pleasure to serve with you all these years.
It means so much to me. It's touched me. I'm not sure I deserve it. But I never dreamed, you guys don't wanna hear my story, but, uh, never dreamed of the, uh, experiences that I would have with this position. Good experiences, bad experiences, loving experiences, and some I just wanted to kick them out in the balls. I've had great people to work with. This community is my home. I live here. And it's representing my family well. I have so much I want to say and I, and it's touching me. It's really touching me. I didn't think it would. I, I thank you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you. I, I wish, I wish anyone back there. Thank you, guys, for having me.
Do you have any records? Has he served on the mayor longer or more years than anybody else?
Well, I tell you, I try to get off every time my turn comes up. Oh, God.
I know.
Yeah, I never dreamed I would be here twenty years. I just, I, I can't believe.
I know, I was linking that up and I was like, oh my gosh, it's been twenty years.
Thanks, thank you, guys.
Your mayor dates are wrong. And I just noticed that I sent those dates wrong. And so I've got to fix that.
Thank you. What a great, what a great experience. Just a great experience.
That's not what I said, Bert. Sure, that is. I said, I sent it the vice mayor dates and the mayor dates.
I make a motion to adjourn.
What's that?
Roll call?
Wes?
Yes.
Wes?
She called your name.
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
This will be a meeting of the Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, April eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Keith? Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Here.
Wes?
Here.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
All right, item B is considered approval of consent agenda. Item A's minutes in the meetings. Item B is approval of claims as follows. March purchase orders, two thousand three oh seven twenty-four. April purchase orders, sixty-six thousand four thirty-two eighty-five. April meter deposit refunds, one thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Transfer six hundred and thirty dollars from pool checking, one four three six eight six, to meter deposit CD three five zero two eight. And the treasures report. Are there any comments or additions to the consent agenda? If not, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item three, citizens' comments. Is anybody out there? I think nobody's left but family.
No, I just, I, I hate it that this is Wes's last meeting as a board member because he's done such a super, super job. I mean, there've been a couple of times, one in particular I can think of and I won't say what it was, that I sat over my dead body when he told me that he wanted to do it and then it worked out just fine. Uh, but anyhow, you've done it, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And I really, I really appreciate what you've done, 'cause it's not, it is not easy.
A lot of good guidance coming in. I didn't do that on my own. Like I said, we all lived in here. We live in here. This is our home. And never one of us want the same things. We do, uh, we all have a, maybe a little bit different approach to, to how we get there, so.
You know, Wes, I left out one thing and that was what you guys had done with the ranch room. Uh, I, it, I had one evening, I had a fellow from Keenfischer sat next to me. I said, why did you come to Hennessy? He said, well, there's nothing open on Keenfischer's main street. I wanted to get out of the house.
Really?
And, uh, I had some Enid friends, I had dinner with them. They brought another friend. And that other friend started talking about the ranch room.
Right.
Then he comes down.
Right.
Cause you know, if you live in Enid, it, Enid is a nice, large city, but it's not that large. They got bored and they came down to the ranch room to have a different.
Different atmosphere, yeah. Well, we got good people here. That's the other side.
And to you other board members, some of y'all need to start learning how to write motions. Because Wes, Wes wrote.
Oh, man, I wrote a bunch of them, haven't I? I wrote a bunch of motions in twenty years.
Yeah.
I don't mind it.
Okay, item four is other scheduled business discussed, except, approved, denied, rejected, and/or take action on the following. Item A's accept, reject, any resignations, not receive part of posting the agenda. I know of none. New business? Citizens' comments again. Councilperson reports. I have nothing to report on the utility authority side.
I have one last thing. Harold, good luck. You're gonna love this position.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else got anything? Okay.
We adjourn. You got a motion? I make a motion to adjourn. Second, roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.